Good morning, everyone, and I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston, U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair will call on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most gracious and heavenly Father, we're gathered here today to do the business of the City of Gaston, and, Father, we just thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the folks that are here today. We want to stop and pause momentarily, Father, and want to lift up our brothers and sisters in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, who last night tragically lost an officer in the line of duty. We lift up that family, the wife and the two children that are left behind, and the fellow officers that grieve for their 13-year veteran that they worked and served with on a daily basis. Father, that's the fourth officer this year, and we just pray for all the families and pray for all of the first responders that are there for the citizens of their respective cities and towns. God, we lift up our agenda today. We just pray that your will be done. We ask you to bless our city and continue to bless our efforts here in Gaston. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and the council meeting that was held on September the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of September the 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. Unfinished business. We have unfinished business. We have one item. Under unfinished business, this is adopting the fiscal year 2020 budget, and this ordinance was presented last week for first reading and approve the following budget. General Fund, $52,556,230. Special Revenue Fund, $7,786,600. Debt Service Fund, $7,318,600. Enterprise and Internal Service Fund is $12,789,437. Capital Project Fund is $8 million. Capital Project Fund II is $7,200,000. The proposed general fund budget provides a 1.25% cost of living raise for all entitled full-time employees making over $15.03 per hour and a 2.5% cost of living raise for all entitled full-time employees making $15.03 per hour or under. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, one question. Was any money put back to the education budget?
Not that I know of. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. SAD LLC doing business as Three Guys Tavern located at 2811 East Megan Boulevard in District 1 have applied for a lounge retail liquor license, Class 1. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Are the applicants in the room? If you would, come to the podium and give your name and address.
My name is John Anderson, Quinn, II. Address is 160 West Drive, Bigmont, Alabama. Just like to ask permission to get a liquor license for our location.
All right, Ms. Quinn, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but it's kind of the nature of this. The ABC application, there's a section that requires you to proactively disclose any previous, you know, charges or convictions.
Yes, sir.
And I noticed that you guys left that section blank, but with the ABI report, there's several charges amongst the group.
We filled it out.
I mean, this section right here that requires you to disclose everything is blank.
No, sir, we turned it in with all that information on it.
Do y'all have a copy of the one turned in where y'all disclosed this? Because the copy I have, it's blank.
It's turned into the ABC Board and also to the city as well.
Your name, please.
Rodney Shane Reed. We went through a lot of paperwork.
That's fine. In the interest of time, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to allow the applicants to clear up maybe any confusion and present the document that they submitted that did claim that. And just to be clear, guys, I want to make it clear. I'm not talking about you turning in your ABI background check. I'm talking about on the actual application to the ABC, you're supposed to physically fill in any prior convictions, and then that's verified by the ABI background check. What we have in this scenario, based on the application we have in front of us, is there was no disclosure of those prior, that prior activity, and then when the ABI background check was run, it actually showed prior activity. And so that's where we're having the conflict, is because that would constitute you guys failing to disclose those prior to if it wasn't filled out in the application. So if that was the case, I would encourage you to follow up with a city attorney. He can be more, obviously, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not giving you legal advice here, but I would encourage you to follow up with a city attorney and clear up any sort of discrepancy on that, because that alone is grounds for us to deny an alcohol license if those previous, that previous activity was not disclosed when the initial application was submitted.
There's no discrepancy. We follow what, when I went to Huntsville, we met with the Alcohol Board. We done what they recommended, which was to go to Montgomery to have a background check.
Yeah, sure. That's required. I'm a retail liquor license holder myself, and I'm very familiar with the process. Yeah, again, though, I want to make it clear that the application to the ABC Board has a section where you are required to disclose any of that activity, and then you submit that ABI background check as proof of what you disclosed. And in this case, it appears as though that portion of the application was left blank, even though the ABI background check was provided. It's an administrative, administrative technicality, but...
Well, I've got everything. It took me a minute to go through. I've got a whole stuff, pile of stuff.
No, I understand, and I'm sure you do. I don't want to make it seem as though I'm making any accusations here. Just follow up with the city attorney.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, guys. So I make a motion, we table this for seven days to allow for the applicants to clarify.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. The City of Gaston doing business as the venue located at 201 George Wallace Drive in District 4 has applied for a special retail more than 30 days license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution amending job classification pay range. This changes the job classification of emergency medical service chief from pay grade 16 to pay grade 18. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next and final item is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Building Code Board of Adjustment and Appeal. This appoints David Marana and Reginald Parker for terms ending July 30th, 2020. Chris Matcham and Kevin Rigsby for a term ending July 30th, 2022, and Lisa Hugh for a term ending July 30th, 2023. It reappoints Andre Pedersen and Ben Connolly for a term ending July 30th, 2021. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards, remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor? Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I have a couple of things. I'm not going to say a whole lot, but I want to let the Police Department know that I do support the police officers. I was a former president of our union, so I know what it is to need a raise and want a raise, and you have a raise. But I could not vote for this budget because of the education. And us pit the education against public safety is not good, because Lisa stood up here, our Finance Director stood up here last week during the budget debate and told us that the money for the police raids came from the $455,000 from public transportation. So it's disingenuous for us to pit the public safety against the education. That money was not for the raise, the $200,000. I just asked you to put the money back in the budget, so, but it's going to be okay, and I'm sure that the Education, Gaston City Education Board of Education will be able to, maybe hopefully, not to have to lay teachers off, and will be able to deal with this budget shortfall with the feds cutting the budget, the state cutting their budget, now the city's cutting their budget. But people need to realize what's going on and take heed to it and deal with the situation. Thank you.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to thank everybody for their interest in the last couple of weeks. This is my first budget. I've never done, I've never been part of a $54 million budget before. It's been pretty interesting. It's 36 pages. I don't know how many lines that that constitutes, but a lot of numbers, a lot of zeros, a lot of emotions. For me, we had 1.7 million in increases in cost in expenditures over last year, and our projected revenue for this year's nine, will increase $980,000. I do agree with Councilman Worthy, we don't need to pit the first responders with our students or with the education, and I'm not sure where that, how that came about, because as he stated, Ms. Rossner said that the funding for the police raises were coming from another department. But 1.7 million in increased expenditures minus $980,000 with projected increased revenues, a $720,000 shortfall, that's not an easy position to be in. And so I think that the budget was done as, you know, it, there's always a way to Monday morning quarterback anything like this, and I'm probably doing it myself. I've probably done it in the past before I assumed this position. But please know that I don't think there was any, I think I can speak for the Council and the Mayor, there was no intention, there's no diabolical plan to hurt education. We've had good conversations with Board members of the Board of Education, and, you know, we have to come together as the elected officials. The Board of Education is now elected, the Council's elected, obviously, and we're the leaders of the community, and we have to work together, and we have to get past the rhetoric. And, you know, there's $106 million that the City of Gaston raises for both of these budgets, the city budget and the education budget. That's a lot of money, $106 million every 12 months. Let that sink in a little bit. There's a lot of moving parts of this. You know, I don't envy the school board for having their budget. It's a large budget, and they've got a lot of expenses, and they've had cuts. We experienced some similar cuts. This is a one-year look, and I think if we look at it over a period of time, hopefully you'll see that the city's been very good to the Board of Education, and I think will continue to be good to the Board of Education. We're all in this together. We have one high school in this city. We have one Board of Education. As I stated last week, and I'll state it again, I have the utmost confidence in Tony Reddick as our superintendent and the leader of our education. Cory Skelton, his financial officer, the utmost confidence in her abilities, and then the Board. And we have great teachers and great administrators. We need to step back, take a deep breath, and look at this from a more totality picture than we're looking at it. And yes, $200,000 is a lot of money. I think we're going to see in days and weeks to come, but everything's going to be okay. There's not going to be layoffs, according to the information that I was talking about this morning with some friends at the Board of Education. So please come together as a community. Please scale back the social media comments. Everybody's welcome to their opinion, but have the truth and have the facts if you're going to make these. Nobody's trying to hurt anybody. We're trying to help our city grow and prosper and educate our students so we can have a ready workforce for all the work that's going on behind the scenes in workforce development. So thank you again for your interest. Thanks for being here, and I hope that we can take this and move forward in a positive way. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I've learned a lot over the last week since the previous board meeting about how to interact with citizens on an issue like this. So I'm going to stop short of telling all you guys what to do. You can make your own decisions. You can formulate your own opinions. That's what the beauty of a democracy is. But I will say this, the fundamental principle of any democracy is an informed electorate. You have to know what you're talking about, and I encourage all of you to dig deeper. I encourage you all to give the same amount of objective discretion towards the Board of Education as you do towards this city council. And ultimately, all I can talk about is why I made the decision that I made to vote yes for this budget. And ultimately, it came down to this. The city this year, or excuse me, the Board of Education this year has a $54.4 million budget, and they have a $567,000 cash reserve. That's excess in the budget this year for, they're budgeted funds for 2020. They have $54.4 million in, or $54.6 million in revenue and $54.1 million in expenses. So I do thank the Board of Education for getting me a copy of this budget. I received it this morning and was able to review it pretty intensely before I walked out here. And if there's something missing that I'm not clear on, I look forward to working with the Board of Education to grasp this information. But it is a lot of moving parts, and ultimately, that's why I made my decision. The City, the Board of Education has a $567,000 budget surplus this year, just for this year, $567,000. We were cutting $200,000 from their budget after three years of unprecedented increases in education budget funding. We've given the Board of Education more money over the last three years than we've ever given, ever, in the past. If you look at it as a percentage of the city's budget, or if you look at it as raw dollars, either way. And the fact is, every now and then, you have to take a breath, and this happened to be one year for the city where we had a whole lot of expenses and a whole lot of increase in expenses, and the fact that the Board of Education had a budget surplus this year, I decided that it was, there's never a good time to cut funding from education, but this year, we're only going to be able to give $2.5 million to the Board of Education instead of $2.7 million. And that results in them receiving budget, they will get 99.979% of their budget with this cut, 99.979%. If you had $100 in your pocket and somebody said you could keep $99.80 of it for one year to help the city balance their budget, I think everybody in this room would do it, and that's exactly what this budget does. So that's the reason I voted for it. But again, I respect every single person's opinion in this room. I respect every single perspective in this room, and I have nothing but admiration and support for Dr. Reddick and the new members of this elected school board who are doing this for the first time themselves. So I look forward to working with them. As Councilman Back said, I know that Ms. Skelton with the Board of Education and Ms. Rossner sat down with several other members of the Board of Education and have what I understand to be a very, very, very productive conversation last week about how our budget works, about how their budget works, and how they're going to change the way they approach the budget process moving forward to make sure that we don't have these emotional situations with the community. So again, that's why I made the decision that I made, and I encourage you all to stand behind yours. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about the enrollment. I'm kind of lost for words here on some of this enrollment stuff I've got in my box today. Out of all the kids that go to school, I don't know why, and I don't, I can't understand this, why MS Sansom Middle School is down about 30-something students. All the rest of them stayed the same. Gaston Middle went up about six, but MS Sansom Middle School went down 32 students this year. I've got it here in front of me, came from the Board of Education projected enrollment, and I just don't understand, are those kids going to another school, or do the, we think that that's not a good school? Can somebody, I'd like to get some answers from somebody about that, because 32 students at MS Sansom Middle School is a lot of students just to be losing this year, the enrollment's down 32. And it's basically down more than anybody on here. I don't even see anybody that's, Thompson Elementary is probably down 21, but we're down 32 students at MS Sansom Middle, and those 32 students has got to be going somewhere. I'd just like, if somebody could, just give me some answers where the 32 was.
Would you like that answer this morning, or would you like to bring it up on the agenda some other day? I know this is improper, but if you ask for wisdom...
Yes.
Madam President, point of order.
Point of order. No. And Councilman Cannon?
I... And he knows.
Remember I told you before, you want to talk to somebody, do it in your office?
I was just curious about this.
Mr. Mac, we'll just wait at another time. All right.
One more.
That's right.
We can talk, Mr. Billen, after this, if you want.
That's why we were here, just wanted to give our...
Madam President, point of order. Madam President, point of order.
One...
That's all I have.
You had all of them. Councilman Reed.
I just think everything's probably been talked out up here this morning. I think it's about time the Board of Education goes off and does their job, and we'll do our job and be happy, because actually, I'm a little bit sick of all this crap, you don't know the truth. It gets tiresome, yes, sir. It's just uninformed, probably on both sides, but it's time for us to do our job, and everybody out there do their job, and knock off all this stuff in between. That's all I got.
I have communication. We can throw, we could throw money at students all we want to, but my thing has always been academic, contrary to what has been said over the, about the caring of the students. I didn't devote 38 years of my life working with students not to care about students. But I want to read you a letter from a retired principal in this school system. And I, we received this letter last Wednesday. Says, "Dear Councilmembers, after investing the best part of my life in the Gaston City schools, I am always interested in how the system is progressing, especially as compared to other schools in our area. I created a spreadsheet from the latest available Alabama State Department of Education report card, which includes all the important data from all three school systems and all schools in each system. I emailed this to Mayor Guyton a couple of weeks ago with no response. Reading in today's newspaper about the drama concerning the council and the school board funding, I thought you might be interested in this data. According to the data, you're not getting positive results from your investment in the system." And on the back of this, which anybody can go to the State Department, you can pull up the data. We're talking, we're not talking now, we're talking money now, we're talking academics, because you can throw all the money that you want to at a student or anybody else, but if they don't know how to read, then they, they can't do anything else. One of the data factors has to do with the accountability indicator, which is the achievement. And this is an achievement indicator that determines based on the percentage of proficient students in the area of reading, English, math, and testing grades on the Alabama Alternative Assessment. Just to give you one example, one of our schools in our, in our system, and it has an academic growth which is good, but if you go back and check the data from last, year before last, this particular school had a 26% academic achievement rate out of 100. So if you take 20, if you look at, if you made 26 on a test, that's an F. So this year, they have 47% academic achievement out of 100. So the only thing that they did, which was an academic growth, all they did was went from a lowercase f to an uppercase F. So that's what we need to be concerned about, the money. And last year, we designated, we earmarked $300,000 for reading, and we're going to earmark $300,000 for reading, math, and tutoring. So all of you that said we didn't care about our babies, you're going to get that part of your money, because we can do that. So the reading part of the money is still there, and that's all you have to do. But I still impress upon you to volunteer. Program was presented today. Go volunteer in the schools. See what's happening in the schools. Then you can understand, and you don't have to take my word for, or you have to go to the Alabama Department of Education, pull up the Accountability Act, and you can see what every school is doing in every system. So see if the school in your community is doing what they're supposed to be doing. Money is not going to teach them, but you've got teachers, you've got parents, you've got people in the community. So I'm an act... So I'm an academic person. Yes, it takes money to do a lot of things, but I'm saying they can't count the money if they don't know how to read. So I just encourage everybody to go out and, if you're interested and you, quote, care about the kids, then do something instead of talk about it.
Yeah, I can.
Anything else? If not, I...
Madam President.
I was supposed to be the, but go ahead since you didn't have your turn.
And I thank the mayor, the mayor also.
I just want to say that I got that letter, and I did call him back and talk to him, and I talked to him again yesterday. So anybody calls me, I do my very best to call. I may not send it or call him back that day, because I do have a little bit of business sometime, but I talked to that person twice. She's on board.
Madam President, just a, just a couple of quick points. I, I have the utmost respect for everyone that spoke last week, well, almost everybody. But, but in general, there are some people that spoke their passion. They spoke relative to what they understood, and, and you can, you can't do anything but respect that. And so while, while I, from an informed position, while I may not necessarily agree with some of what was presented, you respect people's right to expect, to express their opinions. And so I don't, I don't want anybody to feel that they have to apologize for expressing their opinions. And I don't think anybody does, but, but I just want to make that clear. I'll repeat a couple of things that I said last week. The, the emotion does not match the facts. And I want to be clear about that. The emotion does not match the facts. There are a number of people who would be more inclined to mislead and you to respond emotionally than for you to deal with, with facts. I also want to restate the point that, just like we have done historically with any outside agency that we provide funding to, in the event that during or near the end of the budget year, if they encounter a financial hardship and require assistance, there is a process for that agency to request support from the city. It's not something we just made up today. That process has been in place for years. And so there's no, that, that's not something that I just all of a sudden came up with. And so that, that, because the city school board is, is an outside agency, they likewise have the ability to follow that process. So I do want to encourage them. Do want to encourage them that, that you have that ability in the event that as you review your budget, you determine that you are about to meet a financial hardship. So again, it's important to note that. And the last thing I would love to put to bed, again, you can't change people's opinion of this, but, but I want to be very clear about something. Many of us here on this council were of the opinion that Mr. Reddick should have been our first Gaston City High School principal. And I, and I apologize, because we're not supposed to call names, but, but we, we definitely believe that he should have been our first Gaston City High School principal. Many of us believe that maybe even several years back, he should have been given an opportunity to be our school board superintendent. Now that he has the opportunity and that he is the first minority school board superintendent, it is imperative that we make sure that he's successful. So if, if any commentary is made relative to that school board system, it should be more about ensuring that our current school board superintendent is successful and that he's successful to the point that it results in better outcomes for our children. We are in a crisis in this state, and Etowah County is not exempt. We're at a crisis in this state relative to the future of our workforce. Take it from somebody who hires, part, part of what I do on a daily basis is hire and recruit and retain talent. And I can tell you that we are at a crisis in terms of the quality and the credentialing of our workforce. And so a lot of what you have seen in terms of the, the, the adjustment in our budget, while people would love to highlight it and continue to refer to it as a cut, that's fine. People can do, do, do and say what they want. Maybe cuts what they understand. But at the end of the day, much of the adjustment that had to be made was relative to industrial recruitment and for us preparing ourselves with, for what could be some significant economic headwinds. So, so we, we have to be very careful about operating, operating on emotion. And again, people can, you know, I want to encourage people, as Councilman Wilson mentioned, want to encourage people to, you know, express their opinions. But, you know, I'll say again, the emotion doesn't match the facts. The emotion doesn't match the facts. And those of you who know me, those of you who have talked to me, I wouldn't say it if it were not true. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
District One is having a district meeting on next Monday, 6 o'clock, at the Anya Family Life Center. This meeting is adjourned.